Good morning.
Good morning.
You miss me?
I'm not in the meeting today.
You don't miss me?
Yes.
I'm good. How are you?
Good. I feel very good. I know. It's fine.
No, well, yeah. Bye-bye. Yeah. She's more than a term. She's, yeah. I know. I know.
What a person. How are you? We still see you.
Morning.
This is it, though.
Hi. Yeah.
Nice to see you. How are you doing?
Hi, there, Rhonda.
Hi, I am.
I'm Karen Bloom. It's nice to meet you. When first time. Is your mom, was your mom a chillicothe?
She is.
Awesome.
Now you know where I get it from.
Uh-huh. That makes total sense. Yes, that's right. She taught me a little bit about meals.
This is me, sir.
Hypnics, that's... That's one.
Recording in progress.
Good morning and welcome to the Osceola County Committee of Orders. I'd like to call the meeting into order. Are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to remove B under the new business and the clerk's court of conduct.
All right. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions?
Motion to accept. If you may.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Brief public comment. Lawyer court comment. Consider approval of the amendments of July 50, 2025.
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, old business. Personal Administration Committee met on August 4th. And we had mostly on our agenda some EMS items to take care of. The first item we addressed was the EMS Education Coordinator temporary stipend. After some discussion on stipend and overtime, Commissioner Guyson made a recommendation to approve up to five hours of overtime pay per week for the paramedic filling and for the temporary education coordinator's position. So I would make that recommendation at this time.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then also with the loss of our previous education person, we needed to change the job description that goes to the state for the education program. We have that educational program director's position. It's very similar, it just has a little less duties in it than previously. So I would make the recommendation that we approve that job description at this time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. And the next item that you also have in front of you is the EMS employee or EMS service fee schedule. The changes are on page two at the top. And it was to update the policy to reflect what the board did with the prepared service fees being waived by the Osceola County EMS. Everything else in that is still the same. The prompt payment in full within thirty days of billing for non-insured receives a 10% discount. That remains the same. So the biggest thing was just to update this policy to reflect what the board commissioners already approved. So I would make that recommendation that we approve the updating of Policy 104.1, EMS Service Fee Schedule.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then also there was some discussion that the clerk brought to our attention that had in trouble with some of the vouchers not being processed properly and was wondering how to deal with it. The Personal Administration Committee discussed it and recommended that she just returns the vouchers to get the proper documentation to follow along with it. So that's what she's going to start doing. So if department heads don't do it properly, she's going to return it to them. So it depends. That doesn't require any more action. And that's all that happened unless somebody has any questions. Right. Let's move on to the new business. See what happens.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have area agency on A-Jane, West Michigan, annual contract with Osceola County Commission on A-Jane and also county board commissioners. For the fiscal year of 25, '26, it's been sent to us. My packet has been previously sent to the board chair. And I'm asking for authorization for him to sign this document and other documents with that consisting of authorized signature page and the business associate agreement through area agency in A-Jane. The grant this year tolling for us for COA is this is cover all meals program and our home services program, including the rest of transportation. There's $431,721. That's what's been allocated for us as of right now. Obviously, the board knows that that can change throughout the year. It could be amended either way, or we can get more funding, or we could have some funding pulled away from us, which has happened unfortunately this past year a couple times. This amount is less than last year, but it's not as much of a cut that number. We're pretty easy to make at the start. Thankfully, we're able to afford this cut almost by funding through our village and the allocation of just moving the budget around a little bit to save nothing. We've got to actually, we have the same source of money here.
I want to make the motion to approve, let the board chair sign it.
Second.
Just one second. Tim, Mr. Wyatt, should we move items one through three individually?
Yes, please.
All right. So that we can get authorized signs. Signs. Any discussion?
Yes, just give that the amount that we originally awarded last year.
Um, nah, I mean from last year, I don't. But last year, I believe so. I believe it was just over $500,000. And they took cuts throughout the year.
And how much did they take back? Remember?
Last year, they took $25,000 from us. And so we, I think we ended up before $65,000. So we ended up totally losing just around $100,000.
Is this a grant?
It's a grant. And it's considered a grant. It's just a reoccurring every year, it's reapplying. It's actually, the dream we do through that is through the three-year program. And so when we applied two years ago, it's allocated out for three years. So next year, I'll apply again for another three years. It's just each year they make you go back through and readjust your numbers. Because if you're doing more work business than you used to, they take that consideration.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. So now the fiscal year '26 contract agreement.
I'll make that motion to let the board chair sign it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And then business associate agreement.
I'll make that one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right.
And the last thing we have on the main is our meeting that we received a bid last Thursday, Wednesday, it's 30th, on Wednesday for the custom building. We received one bid from an individual who was over the minimum amount that was asked for from Mr. Bobby Ray. Lilly? Bobby Ray. Bobby Ray Lilly. And he had bid $8,100,000.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Your recommendation, Joshua?
I would say we take the bid and take the $81,555 hours and put that against our loan.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Justin, can you share quickly approximately what maintenance cost was on that?
Maintenance cost, no. I can tell you utilities.
Well, that's...
Utilities throughout the whole year, when we were cooking in there and had people going in there, it was just about $22,000 per year. That's what our, that's what our incentive was. The maintenance was probably a bit fill rate in there because a lot of those costs came out of the same bill. But it was high. Our maintenance wasn't too bad because of the fact that we had put a lot of money into the building and we had new furnaces and the roof wasn't too bad. But there was maintenance that had to go into it that was kind of wrapped up into the maintenance. I mean, that's assessment, I think.
Yeah, that's good. How long until we close? I guess I'm concerned interim period of meals.
Well, that's something I was, actually I was having a discussion earlier with everybody on. If I have a request additionally to taking the money and putting against the loan, that's obvious. But I would like to have some time to, we've moved everything pretty much we need to out of there. But finding a suitable replacement for us to move to has been challenging. Even though I have a place for us to move to and come to, I got authorization and an understanding from the Bredele Township Board and the Custom Building for us to move into the community building. But that's really not the first choice just because of the fact that we shared that facility with many people. A lot of the stuff that we set up will have to take down every day. And the meals will be served in a trading format, which is not preference by most people. I have a couple other options that I'm looking at, one in Leroy. But one of them is when I talked to him, Mr. Lilly, at, like, he toured our facility and we get him, I talked to him on the phone the other day. He is very interested in keeping us as tenants in that facility. And I know that was something we were paying, maybe, maybe not, depending on if you bought it. But I would like to have the opportunity to at least sit down and talk to him and figure out if that's something that would even be worth it all. And if it is, then we'll have him. And that, you know, whole community can continue having what they've had and can be over on the question about what's going to happen. So if he doesn't want us there and it's not going to work, obviously, I'll come. I'll talk to Tim and I'll talk to the board. And they'll give us an opportunity to at least move to the custom township hall. Maybe explore a couple other options at the capacity rent. But again, maybe we could stay there. But I don't want it to be a by tomorrow hypothetically and we have to move Monday. Because that way, there would be a gap just for us to something green of the custom and just to have Patrick looking and we'd have to do that. So I would say at least thirty days, something in there.
Mr. Chairman, we need an amendment to our motion. If we want to allow thirty days.
I know, we can put the amendment on there just to make it so that way, that we would close on thirty or even forty-five days.
Boy, come on. How do you amend that motion to where we give forty-five days to close?
I agree. I agree.
Any further discussion of motion?
We pull a time amendment first and then the original motion, etc. Well, you guys retract it and maybe, I can't remember who made the motions.
Commissioner Costa made the original motion, so he just amended his original motion.
Okay.
He didn't make a trillion amendment to the motion.
So we rescind it and you made the motion. Just amended their original motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you, Joshua.
Justin, I have one more question. What is the current status of the meal society in Tulsa? Because I heard they weren't serving meals.
That's not true. We had meals there yesterday. They serve the meals today.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to jump out of order here real quick. We're going to move down to the clerk's co-final presentation. Adam Wirth.
All right. I've asked Arty Ozen's profile to come back. All of the indexes that we send off her profile to have redone are complete. And so I'm going to have him talk a little bit about the cover and what is being done.
Sure. So earlier this year, the clerk dropped this project to you of repairing the index books from her office that were disinvited indexes that were completely torn apart. We passed one of them around at that time for you guys to see how well quality they were. Since then, they've gone through over selling and we've had a chance to repair them entirely, which means we took the interiors, mounted them together. Then we've been treated the papers, so they're no longer disinfected. And I put them in this fire and water resistant binder. Now, the beautiful thing about this is the front cover is completely disinvited. The clerk decides to put the county seal on the front. But something really special that she wanted to do is actually a dedication that instead of just our standard dedication, what we can provide, they dedicated it to the prior clerk, Karen. And then you'll see her simply quickly does. But the book that was done passes from...
So we have nine books dedicated to you. Since you left the longest name on the cover. And then we don't really have it dedicated to anyone but you. So all nine indexes are dedicated to you. And then have your years of service under. You did a fantastic job and you gave great mentors to me, so. This was a dream of mine many years ago, but I didn't have the support that the board... The board's over there, so this is huge. And I'm glad because these are historical records that need to be maintained for many years. So thank you, Rob, for trying to see it. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. So I'm going to have the book here if you want to see what the pages look like. And like I said, and my clerk said, there's nine of them. All of them have the dedications here and their three years of service. They are fireproof and waterproof.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move up, back up to EMI. What's wrong?
Good morning. If I can say, if I can follow that, I can. So, sorry, it's a pretty standard routine business. It's our intergovernmental agreement for the FY24 Homeland Security Grant. Because of the size of those, we have an intergovernmental agreement with West Michigan Regional Medical Consortium. That is our fiduciary. And they are again upgrading to be our fiduciary for FY24. And I'm going to take a motion to have the board chair sign it.
Motion to approve and have the board chair sign it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Final thing, just a reminder, up in this national layout at Riverside Park in Everett, come out and see your local responders and have a good time and some food. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Please close session.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two things today, I think we've been at it. I think we've been at it. First thing on the operating plan, I'm assuming you're going to guide me into what? Then what does you want to...
I would think probably the maximum. But just some questions?
I'll make a motion that we pull out the next one, pass ball.
I'll second.
Discussion? Get a text signal? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay. I'll bring it back in a second for the question approval. The second thing is the, we discussed a second date of his name, maybe? Maybe the very beginning of June. The renewal or opt-in out of becoming designated assessor. I did not go to every unit, every township or city, but I did go to twelve. Once I meet, because it's not...
I'll make a motion that we need actions.
Well, you will all need to sign this, but did you read, you know, what it, you know, what it means and all that was included in the packet? And so I'll just need you to go down and read and then everyone will have a site.
I would hope that we are in agreement of how the assistant assessor's position.
Come designated assessor.
Designated assistant.
Excuse me?
That was originally set up for...
Yeah, this is for fires. This is until December 31st of 2030.
Is that the earliest we can opt out?
No, no. You'll opt out January 1st of 2026 and carry through until December 31st, 2030.
Okay. Is there a second to that question?
Yes.
Discussion?
He has a syllable township board last name.
Last name?
Yeah.
I was there a long time ago. You were there. You and Alicia weren't there.
No, I was there a while.
But, yeah, I visited them. It's been, um...
So we're not dogged by that.
Six June, June 2nd, I was the only signed here to opt out.
Any other discussions? Minus four color roll, it requires all of the individual procedures. Minus four color roll, which requires all of the individual's signatures. Can I please call them?
Steve.
Yes.
Neimer.
Yes.
I just said Gregory.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Costa.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to Toby and the court challenger.
Good morning.
Morning.
I feel like I sent you guys a huge package of information.
We thought that two hundred green trees.
So we have lots to go through. First of all, I'm here to request approval of the childcare fund in its entirety. For the longer that I have several contracts, the services that we provide to our childcare fund that will need to be requested for approval. So you go through, we can say that I'll stop at the contracts, we can discuss the contracts immediately. Just a reminder, our childcare fund is a safe reimbursement program. We receive seventy-five percent back from the county or from the state for community eligible based services. Fifty percent of that we are also reimbursed for item replacements. We still are getting our basic grant funding, which is in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And that is a hundred percent reimbursed by the state. So we have four components this year. The first component is the in-home care component, and this component hasn't changed any. We still are fully funding both of our probation officers, a hundred percent of their salary and their wage, or the salary and their benefits. My juvenile registry is twenty-five percent reimbursed through this, and then my position is reimbursed by fifty percent. Our day treatment program, this also has two contracts that we'll have to discuss. This hasn't changed, we're still collaborating with Eagle Village and Moda to provide our educational and our therapeutic services to youth who cannot make it in our general education program that focuses on. So this year, this is still a seventy-five percent reimbursement under childcare fund, but we have two renewal contracts. Now for Eagle Village, and there's no change to the services being provided, but they did increase their costs three percent across the room. So the increase admitted to a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar contract for this later, but we have reimbursed seventy-five percent of that. So that is our first contract under class approval that we renew for this next fiscal year.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The second contract for this component is our Moda contract. They provide all of our transportation for our youth to get them back and forth to Eagle Village. This contract has not changed from last year. They are still only charging us eight dollars a day per youth, so it will be a fifteen-thousand-dollar contract for this year. So that will be a request for approval as well.
I'll make that motion. Mr. Costa. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Our youth detention center contract, or our youth attempt, uh, ooh. I have words. Youth detention center component hasn't changed this year. This is our at-risk youth pre-petition diversion program. So this is for youth who are struggling, that haven't quite made it to our court system yet. So we provide services and funding to this third-party program, Youth Detention Center, to provide services to those youth, hoping for them not to come into our court system. This is also seventy-five percent reimbursed, so there's no change in that component. Our basic grant component, this is where we've done some changing. It's a reimbursement of a hundred percent, but we want to increase our counseling services, doing beginnings and mental health services, to really hit those youth that aren't getting the prior, the services needed to continue mental health, or the manual app privacy terms that doesn't cover counseling. This is to increase our contract from twenty-thousand dollars to forty-thousand dollars, so that we can double our expanded services to our youth. They're not only, not only doing counseling, but they're going to provide parenting classes in person for families, parents that need it, along with a tutoring and mentorship program that will connect them with people to help them educationally and help with guiding them through the community with mentorships. So this is our third contract that needs to be asked for approval, is that we expand the services for our new beginnings mental health contract.
So moved, second.
Discussion? You said they have a hundred percent reimbursement?
Correct.
Can you tell us about what that is gonna cost?
So she's, she has made the contract, so it's only forty-thousand dollars. Once we hit that forty-thousand-dollar cap, we're done until the fiscal year. So it won't go over the forty-thousand dollars, it will stay right at that forty-thousand-dollar line. So we will track our data through the entire year to make sure that we don't go over that.
I am really impressed with what you're doing with Eagle Village and this, it's a really good program too.
I appreciate that. Our new program is called the Change Program. This is, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
So the new program that we're introducing is called the Change Program. This is an interactive journaling program for our youth to use on topics that range from issues with parents to education, to why are you in the court system? This is an evidence-based program that the state is really pushing, not so much this specific program, but evidence-based in general. This is something in our toolbox that we can now give to our youth to not only allow them to appropriately express themselves through being helped with the probation officers, because they're already trained in this as well. So the probation officers are gonna collaborate with you to be able to work through these programs, to help them express themselves, help them break things out, how to appropriately cope with things that are going on. It is something that we've been looking at for a while, but the price tag was a little more than we could do. But now that it is eligible on our basic grant, we get a hundred percent reimbursed. This contract is something that will be a vital toolbox for us to be able to use to go through and work with our youth and help partner and create the relationships between the probation officer and the youth. And even though we're here as a court and have a little bit of a chemical, we also are the mentors. We are the guidance, we're the guidance right to get them back on track. So this is a great way for them to build a relationship with their probation officer. So I'm requesting that we approve the contract of nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So moved.
Let's do Turner as the motion and Neimer as the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And lastly, that's the last of our components, so lastly, I need the childcare fund as an entirety to be requested for approval for that I can submit it to the state for review.
So moved.
Let's do Neimer as the motion, Turner as the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. Alright, let's move on to some various items. Mr. Lay.
First item is some of, some of the board members, you're aware that we have the individual that's currently holding in a jail that needs quite a bit of medical attention right now. And only having one nurse, jail administrator, and the sheriff I met with. And they were desperately needing having some additional help. And they had created job description for part-time CNA, to be able to come in when the nurse is unavailable to help take care of this individual. I talked with the board chair and we decided it was best to move forward to be able to provide the care that was needed. And so we're just asking today now to officially approve the CNA's part-time position, temporary position for the jail.
I'll make a motion that we approve temporary part-time position for CNA.
Second.
Discussion?
What's temporary? What's temporary?
Temporary, at this point, it would be probably until the inmate is no longer there.
That's what I was figuring, as long as until no longer there's anything in their hair or something like that.
Yeah, pretty much.
Commissioner Castro, what was your question?
What was the price tag on this?
It's, they only raised around twenty-eight fifty right now on the phone up. I think the third coming first of the year, based on, based on where the individual was placed, the position was placed on the week skip.
It's still how many hours a week are we looking at?
It's really very volatile.
Yeah, so far, we've only used her one time. It's basically emergent situations. If something happens to one of his devices, she comes over and takes care of it to, so we don't have to run into the emergency room for them to take care of it.
So she's mobile?
She's in Harrison, but.
Harrison? Okay. Did someone make a comment that the estimated time perhaps the inmate will be incarcerated?
Uh, there's not really an estimated time on how often we're gonna use her. Uh, he's got a couple surgeries coming up, depending on how the surgeries go and as devices are removed, we'll need her less and less, so.
Sure. But here in six weeks?
We talked to Attorney General's office and they said that they would expedite the case.
Yes.
That's the best they could do.
Okay.
Where they could get some. He gets the devices removed, we may be done with her by the end of the month. He gets the devices removed by the end of the month. But if he's not coming along in his treatment and the devices need to stay longer, then we'll have to keep her longer. So far, we've only used her one time, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
The next item, as we started working on the budget for twenty twenty-six, we were looking at some different options to maybe help offset some of our continual annual increases that we've been seeing over the last few years on account of insurance. So we did put a survey out to all the employees. If we were to increase our cash inflow on that a clock out, how many additional employees would take advantage of that, which ultimately would then remove them off of our insurance policy, which we thought would, we could see a significant savings. As of last week, it looks like we had about an addition of six people that would probably sign up for that. So where it gets a little tricky is the savings on that is about thirty-two thousand right now. And we know that there's gonna be a few people at first sex. I know that there's a couple individuals that plan to retire in the twenty-six budget year. And not knowing who, you know, what the future holds as far as replacement of those people, I'm just concerned that maybe that's probably not enough savings. To say to the board, I think that you should probably consider that. I think we're, if somebody retires and we hire somebody back, or two people back, then they both are on the family plan. Based on what our current rates are gonna be for twenty twenty-six, we're, we're gonna be back in the hole on that, so. I guess my guidance to you would be to probably just leave the cash out, that's the same as what it, what it is at this point.
What is it current?
Thirty-five hundred dollars for a family.
What was the proposal to something?
Seven thousand.
Double? In how many current people are taking cash?
So currently, as the plan is, we have one single that opts out, seven double that opt out, and full family that opt out. Insurance, it's gonna be about probably twenty-four thousand for a family plan moving into after September, so.
So according to your projected estimates, we would actually cost more than it would save.
Right now, the savings, if, if nothing changed, our savings would be about thirty-two thousand, a little more than that. But not knowing, we know that there's a couple people that have mentioned they probably will retire. Those individuals are probably gonna need to be replaced and not knowing who we, who gets hired back in. If everybody we hired back in falls under the family plan, that savings isn't really gonna go away and it's gonna cost us additional dollars.
So the savings aren't necessarily possible.
You know, we were kinda hoping that we would see somewhere around ten to twelve additional people. And that there'd be pretty significant savings as well as having some room for the unknowns to happen. It would still be a fair financial.
What are we currently paying for the family? For insurance?
It's around twenty-four thousand.
So when you said thirty-two thousand, that was tracked to the additional ten. We're looking at about seventeen thousand savings per, that's probably family. If they go cash and move. Per family. Confusing. I'm satisfied.
So I guess my thought is no change, but I don't know if any major recommendations say no change, or, you know. Just give guidance that we're legal like that as we move through this budget.
And being a targeting policy, I don't think we need to change it. We're gonna, the statement through here. See, that's another thought.
Oh, I think we should just leave it at that. So because there's no action on various item number two, really no action on number three, number four then. So we go down to the grant for the emergency housing program. We need to set our annual public carrying for that. Also, I'd like to report that due to some payouts coming in over the last year, next year, you're gonna have some de-federalized money that will be eligible to be utilized at your discretion. You can either choose to keep that for the emergency housing program, or you can use that money however the board feels. Like you'd like to use, but that number is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Can you get it again?
Thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-seven cents.
That's the dude that came back in from sales? What was there before?
It was down to nothing.
We didn't keep anything back and we gave it back to the state?
We had no money that came back in last year.
Make sure you had a balance, what was there before?
It may have been a couple thousand dollars. We're going into twenty-six, you're gonna have thirty-two thousand. Either you keep it in the program, or if you have a project in the county you wanna utilize and on fairly, once it's de-federalized, you can use it however you want. You can put it back under the general fund. You can hear market for emergency housing projects.
For the year. Once a year, you don't get any good back to the state if you don't use it.
Not de-federalized.
Not de-federalized, okay.
And the state actually is recommending that we move it. And the state actually is recommending that we move it someplace else other than in the, the emergency housing, I just saw, there's no confusion.
So if we moved it somewhere else, and an applicant came in for the emergency housing, how would that work?
I believe you could move it into the general fund, but you just wouldn't want, the recommendation would be earmark that money for housing projects, if you wanted to keep it for that.
My concern is that if, if you do have an app that contains for emergency housing, we need to be able to take a look at it.
Right. But we need to set the hearing date?
Yeah, it's really what we need to do today. If you have some time to figure out what you'd like to do with the de-federalized plan.
Okay. Also, we need that hearing tonight, Chris?
I would do it after that.
All right.
Which region?
On this line, Jim. Do nine o'clock for the hearing? Does that work for everyone?
Yes. Next item is, we've received from the attorneys handling the Oakley lawsuit, there's another couple settlements that's taking place, and we just need you to, you're up to, wrapped out. The first one, we need to do in two recommendations because they're two different settlements. So the first one, there on the agenda, you can see is with the new bankruptcy on Sackler.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
What was your second?
You, you made the motion to opt-in.
Yes.
Yes.
As the recommendation by the administrator.
I believe that one's going to be a one-time appeal of around forty thousand dollars. The next one, there's.
Yeah.
Eight different pharmaceuticals that have settled. Anyone wants to take a stand on how to pronounce them all, you can.
Just one second. I want to quote on the first one.
Okay.
All right. In all favor of the bankruptcy settlement, Sackler settlement, I think we say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right. That was the one, the second.
Make the motion, we just opted to be listed.
Second. On second motion.
Uh, Russ.
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
You have a token on that one, Kim?
Yeah, push the toggle, yeah.
Have a push.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
The last item I have, gentleman Austin Bancroft has submitted some FOIA requests that pertains to our building department, which the building department has provided all the documents requested through the FOIAs. Mr. Bancroft still feels that apparently there's more information there than was provided, so he has filed an appeal, which ultimately comes to the board. I've met with our building official, probably half a dozen times. I've met with Lisa in the building department. There's no other documents out there. And I think where Mr. Bancroft may have gotten a little confused is, in one of his original requests, requested documents from a timeframe of January of twenty-four through July of twenty-four. And then, as we go down the FOIA request roads, he comes back and asks for documents from January of twenty-five through July of twenty-five. And I believe in that date issue, he was really referencing that when we tried to clarify with him, that we've already given him everything from both timeframes. But he was specifically, that he wanted information back from January through July of twenty-four, which we've already provided that to him. So, he was told at that point in time, those documents were already provided once. And under the FOIA statute, you do not need to provide them again. And I think that is some of the disconception on his part, because he feels that we need to provide those to him again. But everything that the building department's had, that he's asked for, is that, is that given.
If we've provided all the documents that we have.
That's all we have.
That's all we have, so all we can do is deny the appeal.
All right.
Your motion is stated.
I, what is the motion, to deny the FOIA appeal for Austin Bancroft, is on fulfillment of the request.
Just a second.
Okay.
Discussion.
We can't, we have no deal, what documentation is, Jim, is looking, we can't just provide it again and charge it again. Have to pay again, whatever. Shouldn't it easier to provide the second time than the first time?
It was provided to him again.
Twice?
I, I believe Linda did send it out to him again.
Well, I think, I don't understand the appeal.
And I think reading his email to us, I think he's confusing us with Macosta County.
Tell me that. What he's looking for is a civil action. It has nothing to do with the county. It's civil action. And if you read the code book, it reads right in there, you have to follow the procedure. Procedure says that if you have a complaint, you file it with 911, it goes to the sheriff's department. The sheriff investigates and feels that there isn't, there is a complaint there, it goes to the building department. Then the building department makes a determination if it will go to the prosecuting attorney. That's in the mail. I, I still think, if a person wants freedom of information, period, give it to them every time and charge them every time. Might not be what you want, but if he's asking, I, I have, I really have a problem with against giving freedom of information.
That's just, that's the reason I give it.
Give it to them again, charge them again. Is he paying his costs, his charges?
I don't believe he's paying anything.
Well, how does he get it then? Because he has to, we have a policy there.
And if you can collect information in less than fifteen minutes, then under the policy, there's no charge.
Okay, so it takes less than fifteen minutes. Don't you send him a letter? Tell him, come on in and look at it? I just have a big reservation, holding plenty of time, to say that I'm denied freedom of information regardless of, I'm a hundred percent correct, applicant is a hundred percent wrong.
But he's asking for, I think the reason for his appeal is, he's asking for information that we don't possess.
Well.
And.
We have a right to let him come in there. We don't have to send, he puts book in.
But he wants information we don't have, so having him committed is something.
Did he come in and talk to anybody?
I doubt it. I think it's.
Because he's from this county, or is he from a different county?
I have no idea.
You haven't talked to him?
I've attempted to talk to him several times, and there's only so many times on the before at Castilla, the public front. And I finally responded back to him in an email and said, I've done have a conversation with you, and this company's done have a conversation with you. If you choose, you know, it'll be during our time, because there's just, I had not been able to reason with him. Mr. Holdsworth has tried a multitude of times to talk with him on the phone. Pretty much gets the same, the same results. I, I can get along with this guy, anybody, but it's.
No, you, you're not.
This is very challenging with this individual, and I'm not sure what the, my last conversation with him is, it's going to need what, a resolution would be on your part that would be satisfactory? And I can't give that.
If we did approve this appeal, what would the process look like? What would the appeal be? It will, give him a letter back that states that we denied this.
No, why aren't we approving it? What would that process, what if we?
If we approve it, then we would give him the information, which we've already given multiple times. Like I said, I, I believe part of the thing is, he, he seems to think that our building department has authority outside of Osceola County, which it doesn't have. Because in his email, he's referred to a building that took place in Macosta Township or more.
Macosta Township.
Okay, Macosta Township. Well, Macosta Township doesn't fall within our Congress. We have no authority over what Macosta County does. And so therefore, I, I think if we deny the appeal, maybe we ought to put an explanation to go with the denial, that he needs to contact Macosta County for his information on Macosta Township. Because I don't think he's understanding that it's not in our jurisdiction. We can all control what's in our waters, possibly without it. What happens in the, in the, if we're out here, is not our, our voting.
How come he's not here? All right, it says, he's a, maybe I've misunderstood in this process, but this person is appealing to the Board of Commissions, correct?
Correct. It did have to be an email. His appeal came in via email, which is part of the FOIA process. Unacceptable way of FOIA process.
Was he a ask, a meet there?
No.
Original that came in. And we have to take action stated because of the commercial building in Macosta County. He did not, because he's contacted me. He did not ask for any open permits, or any permits that have been filed under his name in Osceola County.
I believe there was no permits under his name in Osceola County. Am I correct, Mr. Holdsworth?
He was still, he was still registered as an officer of that LLC, so if, was there any permits issued that he was not aware of in Osceola County?
Under DT Construction, no.
Nothing?
He's been provided, he was a qualifying officer for DT Construction, and he requested all that information and any permits that DT Construction, or any jobs that DT Construction has worked on since he left as their qualifying officer, which there was none. There was only one job that DT Construction pulled a permit at the DT group on their own without him, but it was a commercial job that had a full set of architect, engineer's plans, sealed plans, and he controlled, anybody controlled.
Completely, there is.
Completely. Everything, now DT Construction has a new qualifying officer. When he quit as their qualifying officer, he went to the state and went to us. The state said, because DT Construction had another individual that was going through the process to get his builder license to become their, their qualifying officer, the state gave him ninety days' grace to, to get that done, in which they did. And in like sixty-five days, they had a new qualifying officer registered with us and with the state of Michigan. So the state of Michigan has told him, there's no there there. We're done with the onerous as well.
Every email he's sent, Mr. Holdsworth and myself, he's copied the state of Michigan. So, I think this is one of those times, unless you want to, unless you want to break this off out in an open meeting, I'll read you all the emails from them.
But we complied with the FOIA act, which has given any information you requested. You can't provide documents you don't have. So, any other discussion on the motion?
What is the motion exactly, again?
Is to deny the appeal to Mr. Austin Bancroft.
Can you add to that, deny the appeal based on the fact that all documentation that we have is already been provided?
I'm looking at the letters that, fine, I'm looking at the letters that were sent out, and copy that. Everything he asked, they provided him everything that we had. So I guess, based on our appeal, or whatever, you've been provided with all information that we have in our records.
I'd like that added to the motion.
All right. All in favor of denying the appeal to Austin Bancroft, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Correct. Turn to this, motion, second, Jim. Any other business? Extended public comment?
Not a comment, just a suggestion from a real estate point of view, when you're talking about the commission on aging building and wanting thirty days for closing. Being a former real estate broker, I've seen a lot of deals fall through at the closing table, and it might be in better interest to actually suggest having possession thirty days after closing. That way, you're sure that the closing is going to go through, and you don't incur any cost moving stuff if it doesn't. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It is a motion. Any other public comment? Lawyer, board comments?
I have one, just a question. If they do the thirty, if we did a thirty day, the speculation would be in, in there that we would have occupancy for the building for forty-five days, can that be done?
You can give possession afterwards. The closing can, depending on paperwork, can take up to thirty days, just depending on. But you can ask for forty-five days, you could ask for sixty days or thirty days after closing for possession. And if they, if the buyer agrees, you're fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other lawyer, board comments? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
No, second.
All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.